Good evening, good evening everybody. Welcome tonight to the Wednesday night service and our last night of our revival services. And we've been having a wonderful time all the way since Sunday. The anointing and the presence of the Lord has just been increasing every night. We're blessed once again to gather in the name of the Lord, so I'm gonna ask you to stand with me. We're gonna open the service in a word of prayer. We want to welcome you. If it's your first time with you, we give you a very special welcome today. Glad that you're joining us. For all of those who are with us today, I'd like you just to turn to someone beside you and just tell them you're happy to see them real quick. All right, we're gonna pray. All right, let's prepare our hearts as we pray right now. Father, we thank you as we gather in the house of the Lord tonight. Jesus, we thank you for everything that you've done. We thank you, Lord, that as you're in our midst again, we come with an expectation in our hearts, Lord. Thank you for your grace, thank you for your goodness. Holy Spirit, we welcome you. Have your way, move freely in this house. And where the spirit of the Lord is, there is liberty. And we declare liberty all across this room and in every heart and every mind tonight in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. Let's praise the Lord together tonight.
Are you thankful for our God, our Lord and Savior today? Hallelujah. Let's praise his name with everything we have. I cannot deny what I've seen. Oh, I've got no choice but to believe my doubts are burning. Oh, like ashes in rain. Hallelujah. Oh, it takes so long to my old friends. Oh, burden and bitterness, you can't just keep them moving. No, you ain't welcome here. Oh. From now till I walk the streets of gold, I'll sing about you. Save my soul. This wayward son has found his way back home. He picked me up, he turned me around, he placed my feet on solid ground. I thank the master, I thank the savior. Because he healed my heart, he changed my name. Forever free, I'm not the same. I thank the master, I thank the savior. I thank God. I thank God. Let's declare freedom in this place today. Hell lost another one and I am free. I am free. I am free. Hell lost another one and I am free. I am free. Oh, I am free. Hell lost another one and I am free. I am free. Oh, I am free. Hell lost another one and I am free. I am free. He picked me up, he turned me around, he placed my feet on solid ground. I thank the master, I thank the savior. Because he healed my heart and he changed my name. Forever free, I'm not the same. I thank the master, I thank the savior. I thank God. I thank God. Hallelujah, hallelujah.
I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. Perfect submission, all is at rest. I know the author of tomorrow, so did my strength. So this is my story, and this is my song. Praising my risen King and Savior over the day long. I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God. I saw the Lord. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. That's why I trust him. That's why I trust him. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. That's why I trust him. That's why I saw the Lord. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. That's why I trust him. That's why I trust him. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. That's why I trust him. That's why I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I saw the Lord, and I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. That's why I trust him. That's why I trust him. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. I saw the Lord, and he heard, and he answered. That's why I trust him. That's why I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God, my Savior, the one who will never fail. He will never fail. I trust in God. You give life. You are love. You bring light to the darkness. You give all. You restore every heart that is broken. Great are you, Lord. Sing that again. You give life. You are love. Bring light to the darkness. You give all. You restore every heart that is broken. Great are you, Lord. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise. We pour out our praise. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise to you only. Great are you, Lord. You give life. You give light. You are love. You bring light to the darkness. You give all. You restore every heart that is broken. Great are you, Lord. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise. We pour out our praise. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise to you only. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise. We pour out our praise. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise to you only. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. All the earth will shout your praise. Our hearts will cry. These bones will say. Great are you, Lord. Sing it out, church. All the earth will shout your praise. Our hearts will cry. These bones will say. Great are you, Lord. Sing that again. All the earth will shout your praise. Our hearts will cry. These bones will say. Great are you, Lord. One more time. All the earth will shout your praise. Our hearts will cry. These bones will say. Great are you, Lord. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise. We pour out our praise. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise to you only. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise. We pour out our praise. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise to you only. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise. We pour out our praise. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise to you only. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise. We pour out our praise. It's your breath in our lungs. So we pour out our praise to you only. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord. Great are you, Lord.
I am an instrument of exaltation. I was born to lift the name above all names. You hear the melody of all creation. But there's a song of praise that only I can sing. Who else is worthy? Who else is worthy? There is no one who would be Jesus. Who else is worthy? Who else is worthy? There is no one who would be Jesus.
There is no one but you, Jesus. You are the infinite God of ages. Yet you chose to make my heart a dwelling place. You healed my brokenness, showed me your glory. So I have songs of thanks not even angels sing. Who else is worthy? Who else is worthy? There is no one but you, Jesus. Who else is worthy? Who else is worthy? There is no one but you, Jesus. Who else is worthy? Who else is worthy? There is no one but you, Jesus. Who else is worthy? Who else is worthy? There is no one but you, Jesus. There is no one but you, Lord. Holy face, you know, Jesus. Lamb of God, anointed one who was and is and is to come. Is seated on the throne above. Holy, holy, righteous one. Who shed his blood to prove to us the Father's love. Jesus Christ be lifted up. Holy, holy. Lamb of God, anointed one who was and is and is to come. Is seated on the throne above. Holy, holy, righteous one. Who shed his blood to prove to us the Father's love. Jesus Christ be lifted up. Cause who else is worthy? Who else is worthy? There is no one but you, Jesus. Who else is worthy? Who else is worthy? There is no one but you, Jesus. It's just you, Jesus. My whole life for your glory. My whole world for you only. Everything for the honor of your name. And if my days tell a story, let it be. Of you only everything for the honor of your name. My whole life for your glory. My whole world for you only. Everything for the honor of your name. And if my days tell a story, let it be. Of you only everything for the honor of your name. Oh, my whole life for your glory. My whole world for you only. Everything for the honor of your name. And if my days tell a story, let it be. Of you only everything for the honor of your name. Oh, my whole life for your glory. My whole world for you only. Everything for the honor of your name. If my days tell a story, let it be. Of you only everything for the honor of your name. Everything. You can have it all, Jesus. Everything I am is yours, oh, Lord. Jesus. Who else is worthy? Who else is worthy? There is no one but you, Jesus. Who else is worthy? Who else is worthy? There is no one but you, Jesus. Only you, Jesus. It's only you, Jesus. Lamb of God, anointed one who was and is and is to come. Is seated on the throne above. Holy, holy, righteous one. Who shed his blood to prove to us the Father's love. Jesus Christ be lifted up. Holy, holy. Lamb of God, anointed one who was and is and is to come. Is seated on the throne above. Holy, holy, righteous one. Who shed his blood to prove to us the Father's love. Jesus Christ be lifted up. Holy, holy. Lamb of God, anointed one who was and is and is to come. Is seated on the throne above. Holy, holy, righteous one. Who shed his blood to prove to us the Father's love. Jesus Christ be lifted up. Who else is worthy? Who else is worthy? There is no one but you, Jesus. Who else is worthy? Who else is worthy? There is no one but you, Jesus.
Amen. Let's give the Lord a big hand clap of praise tonight. You can go ahead and be seated for a few moments. Beautiful atmosphere of worship. We've been really blessed ever since Sunday when our revival services began with Pastor Charles. Every service, the Lord has done something. And we've had many different testimonies that have been rolling in. And there's been a lot of healings that have happened. And so we were able to get some of them on video. But if you're here today and we have not yet got a testimony from you and you have a testimony, if you've been healed or delivered of something and you'd like to share that, we'd like you to stick around for a few minutes after church. It won't take long, but we'd just like to capture your testimony on video quick. And the Lord has done some wonderful things and I know he's helped a lot of people. And we've been very blessed every night. And once again, the presence of the Lord is in the house. I'm grateful because these have, I would say without a doubt, been our best attended meetings that we've had throughout the week when we've done revival services. And before I, I think it was even before I moved to Brockville, someone told me, "You can't do services through the week in Brockville because nobody will come." And for a long time, I pretty much seen that that was the truth, but I refused to accept that because there's too much life in having meetings like this to let them go or not fight that battle. And so praise the Lord, we've had a great time. We've had a great time this week, a great time. I wish we could go all the way to Sunday. As we prepare to receive the offering tonight, I'm going to receive, excuse me, I'm going to read a verse here in 2 Corinthians, chapter number nine, verse number six and seven, where it says, "Remember this: A farmer who plants only a few seeds will get a small crop; but the one who plants generously will get a generous crop. You must each decide in your heart how much to give; and don't give reluctantly or in response to pressure, for God loves a person who gives cheerfully." And the next verse as well says, "And God will generously provide all you need; then you will always have everything you need and plenty left over to share with others, as the Scriptures say." God will not only meet your need, the Bible says, but it says he will meet your need generously. God doesn't just fill our cup. He wants to overflow our cup so that we also have excess to give away. Jesus taught us it's more blessed to give than it is to receive. And it takes a special work of the Holy Ghost in your life for you to become the kind of person that delights in giving, that celebrates giving. You know, we preach. We preach healing. And the Bible says that faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word of the Lord. And as we preach healing, people receive healing because it stirs faith inside of their hearts. But the same principles apply when it comes to giving as we teach and preach giving. It can ignite faith in your heart that you can use that faith and attach that faith to the seed that you're putting in the ground so that you're not just doing something out of compulsion or just like every other time you've religiously given an offering, but that you would know you are doing something significant. And by that, I mean meaningful to you. And so that's why I've been saying, and I said last night, if you only gave one offering throughout the entirety of these meetings, but it was one offering that it was significant to you, you'd be better off to do that than little bit here and little bit there because you've put meaning on your seed. And so if you've not yet given a seed and sown a seed, why don't you just ask the Lord right now what he would put in your heart this evening? Pastor Brian Charles has been a great blessing to us and we're just sowing into his ministry tonight. And the Bible teaches us that freely we receive, freely we give. You can't buy anything from Jesus, not with money. You can't buy healing, you can't buy deliverance, you can't buy salvation. He freely gives to us and he wants us to be in a place where we are also givers back to him and where we delight to sow into the kingdom. And so when a spiritual gift comes into our midst or our ministry is received and in spiritual things are imparted to us, it's an opportunity for us to partner with that in giving an offering, partnering with that anointing on another level. And so I'm going to ask you to stand with me once again in the house of the Lord tonight. If you need an envelope right now for an offering that you can receive a tax receipt, you could just lift up your hands. If you didn't grab one on the way in, our usher will bring one by to you. If you need an envelope, if you'd like to give through e-transfer tonight, you can give to theascentchurch@gmail.com. Just mark on the notes either Pastor Brian or PB so that we could get your offering designated to where it needs to go. Even if you put jelly, we'll know where your offering needs to go, okay? You can even put PB and jelly and it's all going to go to the same spot. So don't be jelly about it. Amen. Let's come and bless the Lord together.
Thank you, Jesus. Who else is worthy? Who else is worthy? There is no one but you, Jesus. Who else is worthy? Who else is worthy? There is no one but you, Jesus. Who else is worthy? Who else is worthy? There is no one but you, Jesus.
By faith, just stretch your hands towards your seeds tonight. Father, we just thank you, Lord. You said, "Give and it shall be given." You told us it is more blessed to give than it is to receive, but you also said, "Give and it shall be given." Pressed down, shaken together and running over when men pour into our bosoms. So we just take you out your word tonight. We thank you for the opportunity that as we sow into the kingdom of God, that we are able to partner, Lord, with the kingdom, sow into the work of the ministry, sow into the kingdom and be a blessing. We love you, we thank you, we give you glory in Jesus' name. Amen. While you're standing, we're going to welcome Pastor Brian Charles to come. Let's give him a big God bless you. He's been a blessing.
Praise God. Let's give it up for the worship team there. Beautiful. God inhabits the praises of his people. Well, tonight's the last night and I just wanted to thank Pastor Robert and his wife, Rachel, wherever she may be, oh, Rachel, and for the hospitality you've shown me and just to allow me to come and minister the word of God. God is good and God's doing some good things, amen? And you know, we've been born for such a time as this and it's an awesome time to be alive in the Lord right now, amen? And you may be seated, praise God. God's going to do some good things tonight. I said last night that I felt the Lord was telling me all week to pray for impartation tonight. And I don't do that all the time. You know, I've probably done it maybe two or three times in the 35 years I've been in ministry. But all week, God has been birthing that into my spirit every day as I'm in prayer. So he's going to do something tonight, amen? And I want you to know that impartation comes from association as well. And when you're called into a ministry, when you sit under the ministry and you submit to the ministry, there's impartation taking place in yourself. And that, like I said, we ministered on unforgiveness and offense. The devil'd love to get you offended, then you can't receive the impartation that God has for you. Do you know when you come into church and you hear the minister preaching on something that you'd been discussing the day before? That's because... That's because that's impartation taking place, amen? Because of association, because you're in the right place at the right time doing the right thing, amen? And that's the Lord. But I wanna share on the anointing, amen? So I'm gonna pray, "Father, thank you for the word of God. Thank you that it's forever settled in the heavens. Let it be settled in our hearts, Lord. David said, 'Open thou mine eyes, that I may behold wondrous things out of thy law.' Lord, thank you for the word of God. Thank you that it never returns void, it always accomplishes that which it is set to do. We thank you for signs, wonders and miracles tonight because that's the God who we serve, Jesus Christ, the same yesterday, today and forever. And Lord, I followed your instructions in the Spirit and I expect results in Jesus' name because you confirm the Logos word and the Ramah word, Father. And we thank you. Let your name be exalted and glorified. Lord, speak through this vessel tonight. Anoint me, Lord, once again for your service. I thank you for it in Jesus' name. I welcome the power of your presence, Lord. Express yourself whatever way you see fit for your glory. Let my thoughts be your thoughts and my words be your words in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Praise God. You know, there's one baptism, but there's many infillings, amen? And so I pray today, "Lord, give us a fresh infilling of your Holy Spirit tonight. And Lord, give us a faith shift if we need that as well, amen? Hallelujah. And I believe there's gonna be a shift in the Spirit, amen? We're gonna advance. We're always advancing in the things of the Lord. We're not saved, sanctified and stuck, are we? We're moving, we're going somewhere. We're going and flowing, praise God. Let's go to Luke 22, 39. And this is before the crucifixion of Jesus. Luke 22, 39, 44. "And he came out and went, and as he wont, to the mount of Olives; and his disciples also followed him. And when he was at a place, he said unto them, 'Pray that ye enter not into temptation.' And he was withdrawn from them about a stone's cast, and kneeled down and prayed, saying, 'Father, if thou be willing, remove this cup from me; nevertheless, not my will, but thine be done.' And there appeared an angel unto him from heaven, strengthening him. And being in agony, he prayed more earnestly; and his sweat was as it was great drops of blood falling down to the ground." Amen. Jesus of Nazareth, the Son of Man, was wrestling with the will of God just like we do. Amen? We wrestle with the will of God, don't we? We don't wanna go through pain, but sometimes when we go through pain, there's much gain, amen? After we suffer, there's glory, amen? And Jesus was in the Garden of Gethsemane. And the Garden of Gethsemane means oil press. Everybody say, "Oil press." Amen. Jesus was being crushed internally for the will of God to be accomplished. He was dying to himself, amen? He was dying to himself, he was dying internally. Then Jesus went to the cross where he was crushed externally. He was being crushed internally and then he was being crushed externally on the cross. But it was all for us, amen? Jesus didn't die for himself, he died for us. Jesus didn't conquer the devil for himself, he conquered him for us, amen? Hallelujah. And this is where this takes place, in the garden. And the suffering Savior's physical disfigurement would be unparalleled, amen? He was crushed inside and out. He became crushed and ugly so we could become saved and beautiful in the anointing. Hallelujah. And it says in Isaiah 52, 14, "As many were stoned at thee, his visage was more marred than any man." And even the Passion Translation says, "Just as many were appalled at the sight of him; for so marred was his appearance, like an object of whore, he no longer looked like a man." So we can imagine, amen? Even the passion of Christ didn't do justice of what happened to our Lord and Savior, amen? And in Ezekiel 16, 6, it says, "When I passed by thee and saw thee polluted in thine own blood, I said unto thee, 'When thou wast in thy blood, live.' 'Yea, I said unto thee, 'When thou wast in thy blood, live.' And then in verse nine, it says, "Then I washed thee with water; 'Yea, I thoroughly washed away thy blood from thee, and I anointed thee with oil.'" And Ezekiel 16 has a twofold meaning. God speaks of Jerusalem as if she's abandoned infant, unwanted, left to die and still covered in the blood of birth. But God passes by and sees her helpless and polluted and in mercy says, "Live." The same God that passes by Jerusalem and causes it to live is the same God that passes by us and said, "In thy blood, live. In thy blood, live." Amen? And all humanity is polluted by sin, spiritually dead, unable to save itself, amen? God will never, amen? And one thing, it's not, sin has already been dealt with. There's only one antidote for sin and that is Jesus Christ, amen? And if you reject him, you reject the antidote for sin and that is Jesus, the Savior, and what he accomplished for you, amen? And our faith has to be in what he has done because he did for us what we cannot do for ourselves. And I want to just touch on something. And when God saves you and touches you, he'll never leave you where he found you, amen? He'll never leave you where he found you. He wants the best for you. And John 5, 7, 1 John 5, 7 to 8 says, "For there are three that bear record in heaven: the Father, the Word, and the Holy Ghost; and these three are one; and there are three that bear witness in earth, the Spirit, the water and the blood; and these three agree in one." When you honor the blood of Jesus that was shed in accordance to the water of the Word on earth, the Holy Spirit manifests. Everything has to be done in honor to Jesus in accordance to the word of God for the Holy Spirit to manifest, amen? It's all about Jesus, amen? It's all about the word of God. It's all about the anointing being released. The word of God is voice activated. When we speak the word, it activates the power of God. And when we're doing it with the motives for God's glory, good things happen, amen? Because it's all about Jesus. You know, he's everything we need, praise God. And I believe that in this last day, he's gonna get all the glory for the great things that we are about to see, amen? I believe God showed me a vision years ago and he was reminding me of it again today because we are anointed people. We are called of God. We are God's chosen generation. We are elected of God. We are anointed of God. We are appointed of God, amen? We're the devil's nightmare. Hello, somebody, amen? Hallelujah, praise God. And he doesn't want you to know who you are and how you're anointed and what God has called you to do and be. He wants you confounded because then you're not releasing and speaking what God tells you to speak and doing what God tells you to do. But he is a loser, amen? And we're on the winning side, praise God. And the anointing destroys yokes and removes burdens. It says, "The yoke shall be destroyed because of the anointing," amen? And when the anointing starts flowing, if you have a yoke, if you're yoked up to sickness, if you're yoked up to drugs, if you're yoked up to promiscuous living, if you're yoked up to a devil, God will set you free. The anointing will come and destroy the yoke and remove the burden and set you free, amen? And we can all be free if we really wanna be free. And his blood was shed in that garden. He took on all my mental deliverance, amen? He took on every hurt, every pain and his blood cleanses my mind and purges my conscience of every dead work undeserving the living God, praise God, amen? That's how powerful his blood is. When the devil starts playing with my head, I start applying the blood and bring to remembrance when Jesus shed his blood in the Garden of Gethsemane for the healing of my mind. I had a guy come up to me one time, pray for me, I'm having crazy thoughts. I said, "Pray for me, I'm having crazy thoughts too." But it's what I do with those thoughts when they come and recognize where they're coming from. And I speak the word of God and you release the anointing and the yoke is not gonna get on you, it's gonna get destroyed before it gets on you because you're standing in the authority as a soldier of the cross. Why are we called soldiers of the cross? Because we're recognizing what Jesus did, amen? Because our commanding officer destroyed their commanding officer, praise God, amen? Hallelujah. And we stand in charge, not Satan, amen? And this vision God gave me years ago, it's before we leave this earth, I know what's gonna happen. And I was in, I was having a prayer time and all of a sudden I seen the blue skies and I seen thousands of little white whirlwinds all over the place. And I'm like, "Lord, what is that?" And he said, "That's little, that's anointings that are gonna come upon my people in their world." The Bible says, "Go into all the world and preach the gospel." Your workplace is your world, amen? Whatever you, wherever you go, whatever you do, that's your world. That's where you reveal Jesus through your life, amen? And the Lord showed me that there's, and think about Peter, when they went to the gate beautiful, that was their world. They were going to the gate beautiful and they said to the man begging alms, they said, "Silver or gold have I none, but look upon us; because the anointing came upon them, and the anointing healed him, and he went dancing, leaping and praising God into the temple." Hallelujah. And it was for the glory of the Lord. And the Lord showed me that these anointings are gonna come upon God's people in the marketplace, in the workplace. Hallelujah. And people are gonna get miraculously touched by the power of God because we're gonna be in the right place at the right time doing the right thing and we're ready to operate in that anointing, amen? And it's all for the glory of God. And it's gonna destroy yokes and it's gonna bring glory to the name of the Lord, amen? And I'm just gonna bring a story to you that comes to my mind because the Lord wants you to hear it. I remember this lady, because God does everything for his glory, amen? And I remember this lady, I went into a pizza place and had pizza and we started talking to the lady and she said, she knew Jesus. So we were there and she says, "I gotta share a story with you." And she was sharing with us that she was totally deaf in one ear. And she went and got prayer. She went, she just got saved, she went and got prayer in this church, I know the church, and she didn't feel nothing. She went to work the next day and her first order, when she went to pull the pizza off the counter to take it to the people, healing manifested in her ear and she was completely healed. And she shared the story with me and I said, "Lord." I said, "Wow, why, you did, why did you do it that way?" And he said, "I wanted her to trust in me, not in the man that prayed for her. I wanted her to not be codependent of the man to pray for her all the time. I wanted her to know that I touched her, I healed her, I delivered her." Amen? Because sometimes we become codependent of people, but it's Jesus. Greater is he who is in me than he who is in the world. Greater is he who is in you than he who is in the world. You've got the same Jesus. We all have different anointings and different mantles and different offices, amen? And different responsibilities, but we have the same Jesus, amen? Hallelujah. And when there's no preacher around, guess what? You're available. I get people all the time, "Well, I want you to come and pray for this person and go and do that." I go, "Why don't you pray for them? You've got the same Jesus in you." Hear how quiet I got in there? "But you're the pastor." "Yeah, and I'm equipping you, I'm teaching you to pray for people. Lay hands on the sick and they shall recover." It's not just for the fivefold ministry. It doesn't just say, "Well, the fivefold ministry will go out and lay hands on the sick and they shall recover." Or it says, "They who what?" "Believe." Is there any believers here? Yeah, well, then you qualify. He's talking to you, amen? Have faith in your faith. Have faith in the Jesus that's in you because who Jesus is to you is who Jesus will be through you, amen? And that's what we're called, we're called to believe. And when we release, when we lay our hands, it's Jesus that's manifesting. It's Jesus that's healing. It's Jesus that's delivering, amen? It's Jesus that's setting them free. It's Jesus that appointed us. It's Jesus that anointed us. It's Jesus that called us. It's Jesus that saved us. It's Jesus that's walking with us, amen? Glory be to God, amen? David said, "I could run through a troop and leap over a wall." When the anointing starts moving, hallelujah. He'll put a new spring in your walk, a new joy in your talk. He'll give you bubbles for your troubles, praise God, he's a good God, amen? And you accepted Christ, the anointed one, and he was crushed on the internal and the external so you could have the anointing of God. And man, when I started, when I first got saved, I wanted to find out about David. I studied David, 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 and he cherished the anointing above anything else. He said, "This one thing have I desired, that I dwell in the presence of the Lord all the days of my life." Amen? And he knew if I brought the Ark of the Covenant, there'll be 24/7 worship there and God's presence and God's glory will be there, praise God. Now we have God's presence. "Know ye not, ye are the temple." Amen? You're the temple. Remember the old temple, remember the tabernacle in the desert? That was wandering in the desert? That was pointing to you, amen? When you looked at the temple from an aerial view, it had the, all the instruments and everything in there made the replication of the cross, amen? And the glory of God was in that temple. And now you're a mobile home and God dwells in you. "Know ye not, ye are the temple of God." There was the outer court, the inner court and the holy of holies, amen? And the outer court is your flesh. The inner court is your soul. Or the outer court, the inner court is your mind, will and emotions. And the holy of holies is where your spirit is, right here. "Out of your belly shall flow rivers of living water," amen? God dwells in the house. Who's in the house? God, amen? Anyway, I'm gonna talk a little bit to you about the anointing here. And I wanna share something with you that I found was interesting as well. Because if you accepted Christ, you're anointed. And the word "anointed" means you're smeared. You're smeared for life. You can't run away from God, you better run into God, amen? Because he'll never leave you nor forsake you, amen? You can reject him and be miserable, amen? But he'll always hound you, he'll always draw you, he'll always woo you, amen? You might as well surrender and get over it. I fought the law and the law won. Hello, amen? So you are anointed, you're smeared of God, amen? And guess what? You're a worldly misfit. You're a worldly misfit. You can't fit in the world anymore. There's no comfort in there anymore. And when you go to try to live in the world, you'll be the most miserable one in the crowd because you know a better way. "Oh, taste and see that the Lord is good." Once you've tasted God, nothing else will ever satisfy, amen? Mick Jagger's still singing, "I can't get no satisfaction," eh? Hello, somebody, it's true. But look at Saul, okay? Now this is powerful. Look at Saul's miserable life because he never obeyed the anointing. King Saul, his life was miserable because he never obeyed the anointing as a king. We're anointed as kings and priests. Hello, amen? He had anointing on his life and he didn't obey the Lord. The Lord told him, "Kill all the Amalekites." He didn't kill what God told him to kill and it ended up killing him, amen? And we need to be obedient to the Lord. The Amalekites were called bushwhackers, amen? But the oil press, I was in Israel and we did a tour of the oil presses there. And there's four presses under the rolling stone that goes around, amen? The first press is for the virgin oil, olive oil, for the temple, for temple services, amen? For the menorah, the seven lamps and the temple duties. Then the second press would be used for everyday consumption with food, right? The third press would be used for soaps, moisters and beauty, amen? I used to be addicted to soap, but I'm clean now. The fourth press... The fourth press would be for the oil lamps, amen? So, so the crushed olive oil would affect every area of their lives. Just like Jesus, when you got saved, he affects every area of your life. Jesus was crushed. The anointing affects every area of your lives. Glory be to God. Because it says in Philippians 4:19, but my God shall supply all your need according to his riches and glory by Christ Jesus. Why? Christ, the anointed one, supplies all your needs. Amen? And what did he say in Matthew 6? Seek he first the kingdom of God and his righteousness, and all these things shall be added unto you. God will get what you need to you. Amen? As you put him first. Seek he first the kingdom of God. He want, he just wants first place, not second. God doesn't care what you have as long as it doesn't have you. God doesn't care what you're watching as long as it's not watching you. Hello? We used to preach against TVs, amen? We used to preach against everything. But you got to make sure what you're watching isn't watching you. We used to preach against makeup, now we praise God for it. Hello, somebody? It's my last night, I'm leaving. Well, he took up the offering, right? Just kidding. Those preachers, alls they want is money. If I was in it for the money, I'd have been gone a long time ago, amen? You know what? They, they'll keep you poor and keep you humble, that's the way they think, amen? We won't go there anyway. Maybe a Sunday afternoon service or something sometime. Holiness, food, beauty, warmth, light, all because of God. All points because of the anointing, amen? And all of us were shaken out of the tree. And they would be separated, just like God called you and he shook you out of your family tree and he separated you, didn't he? Amen? He called you out. You might be the only one saved in your family, but you might be the only righteous one. There was a lamb per house. You might be that lamb per house, praise God. Amen? Glory! And you know what? As, as for me and my house, we shall serve the Lord. You might be the only one and everyone in your family rejects you, comes against you, but they're going to get saved because of you. Believe on the Lord Jesus Christ and thou shalt be saved and thy house. I'm not trying to figure it out, I know it's true. I don't have to figure it out. It's not my job to save him. It's God's. I believe what he says, that settles it. He won't listen, your family members won't listen to you. Because you're always going to be that little brother or that older sister. Amen? God will send somebody into their life and minister to them and they'll get saved, praise God. And you keep binding their life to the altar of God, amen? Hallelujah, glory be to God. And so, you know, sometimes you feel like you're hard pressed on every side, right? But get ready, there's a fresh anointing coming upon you. And that's how God gets the glory. His supernatural power shows up and keeps you going. I've wanted to quit many times. There's been times where I, I wanted to leave the ministry. Seriously. I was ready to leave the ministry and I never said nothing to nobody. And I've had different men of God from Africa. I walk in, I just sat down, you know, I didn't look like a preacher or nothing. I, I made myself inconspicuous as I could. And I sat there and the guy calls me up, he says, you stand up right now. God says you're a pastor and you're a good pastor, you keep pastoring. Amen? Petty party was over. Amen? Hello? And then I had two ministers phone me and offer me two different churches. And then on my head swimming around, I'm like, whoa, God, what's going on here? You know? And one said, yo, you'll never have to work, everything will be wonderful. Like, you know, you'll be taken care of, you know? We were struggling financially at the time too. All those things come when you're in a tight spot, amen? You'll get tested too. But you're going to serve God or money? Hello, somebody? Amen? And, and I remembered, and then my head swimming around and I'm saying, Lord, is it time for me to leave where I am? What's going on? You calling me out? And then I started questioning my call, started questioning the anointing on my life and where I was and what I was supposed to be doing. But praise God, when your heart's right, when your heart's right and you want what God's, God wants, he'll send a donkey. I might be your donkey tonight, hello, somebody? And anyway, I go to this conference and this guy from New York City says to me, you know, he calls me up, he says, you're a pastor, aren't you? I go, yeah. He goes, you're supposed to stay right where you are. Just like that. See, one word from God can shut the mouth of a thousand devils. Amen? Because the devil had me confused now. And I wasn't fully in and I was questioning myself, amen? I wasn't believing in myself. If you don't believe in yourself, God won't, the people won't believe in you. The enemy knows that, amen? And you got to know the anointing, you got to stay in that flow. Because that flow will keep you. It empowers you. Amen? God keeps us. We're going to go through things, but the anointing will get you over. Amen? You'll always go over, you'll come out with a glory story. Amen? Hallelujah! History, his story, amen? It's all for his glory. And so anyway, the Lord positioned me and then, and then another guy prophesied over me from, from California the same weekend. He said, the Lord told me, he didn't know where I lived, what was going on. He said, the Lord's going to use you in Southern Ontario. He said, there's an anointing going to be upon your ministry. And he said, there's going to be canopy of God's glory. People are going to come in and out and they're going to get healed, they're going to get delivered. They're going to get what they need. Amen? So praise God. And, and that's going to come to pass, it's happening. People are being healed, people are being delivered where I am. And that's where I'm, where God wants me to be. And there's no better place to be than where God wants you to be. And that, he has set members in the church. You don't pick a church, he picks a church for you. People say to me all the time, well, how do I know I'm in my home church? You'll feel at home! That's what I used to put on our bulletin, welcome home! Amen? I don't like, other people come to our church and say, I like your church, there's no politics. I go, we don't like, politics killed Jesus, remember? Religion killed Jesus, remember? Religious people and politics will, is a murdering spirit. It can murder you, amen? We cherish the anointing, amen? We look after what God has given us. You cherish the anointing. And if your faith was little, then what? Much will be given. Amen? Glory be to God. So cherish the anointing in your life and the anointing in this place, right here. Amen? And pray for your pastor or your pester. Amen? He could be pastor one day, pester the next, amen? It kind of goes like that. Amen? But a good pastor will tell you what you need to hear, not what you want to hear. Hello, somebody? But if he's telling you, never mind. I'm getting out of here tonight, one way or the other, praise God. And, but there's a price to pay for the anointing and it's called obedience. Amen? When the stone was rolled away after Jesus was crushed, we were given access to the anointing. Amen? All men were given access to the anointing. And the veil was rent in two, which was pointing to the flesh, amen? And it was rent in two and it was rent down the middle and it opened up and Ephesians even talks about the Jew and Gentile coming into the holy of holies, amen? We have access to the presence of a living God. And when God calls you, the anointing will separate you, like I said. Remember when God called Abraham? He said, come out from amongst them. Come out from your family. Come out from your country. Come out from your traditions. Come out and follow me. We come out from the world, amen? Egypt came out of the world, but the world never came out of them. Israel came out of Egypt, but the world never, but Egypt never came out of them. That was their problem. And they rebelled all the way along. Amen? For forty years. Amen? Every time I hear that story, it reminds me of Gilligan's Isle. Amen? A three-hour tour. It was only a two-week journey, but it took them forty years. Hello, somebody? Amen? And you can imagine, but God sustained the two men, the three of them, that he sustained, he sustained Caleb and he, and he sustained Joshua. Amen? And Moses, why? Because they cherished the anointing. They believed the word of God. And God kept them in a rebellious, in the midst of a rebellious people. He kept them and the promises of God came to pass because they cherished what God said. They wouldn't, they wouldn't believe the report of the enemy, which was called, the, the report of the enemy was doubt. It was called an evil report. They wouldn't believe that, they believed, they chose to believe God. And at the end of it, Caleb was of a different spirit. He said, I'll take that mountain there, please. Forty years later, he felt like he did when he started, glory be to God. That's what the anointing will do. It'll keep you young, amen? Glory be to God, because the anointing, it says, clean the inside of the cup and the outside will be automatically cleansed. Look after your heart, for out of it flows the issues of life. Out of his belly shall flow rivers! Rivers of anointing flow unto every avenue of your life. Hallelujah! Some of you people are going to get some restoration tonight. Some of you people, God's getting ready to go ahead of you and make a way where there is no way. Amen? Someone else is going to get healed here tonight too, praise God. We already got one lined up, wants to get born again, praise God. Amen? Hallelujah! The anointing separates you. Amen? You mix oil and vinegar, it separates, doesn't it? And we, we are separated. We're in this world, but we're not of it. Amen? Jesus said, the kingdom, the ruler of this world comes, but he has nothing in me. Amen? He was, he was marching in the orders from headquarters. He was being obedient to the word and the will of the Father. And sometimes when we see him in the garden of Gethsemane, that will is hard. But we die to God's self and a fresh anointing comes along. Because a fresh anointing came upon Jesus and he got up and his face was like flint and he knew what he had to do and he went to the cross, glory be to God. He was strengthened by angels. And that tells us that we are strengthened by angels when we come into challenges, amen? What Jesus gets, we get! Because we're joint heirs. We're heirs of God and joint heirs with Jesus, praise God. I pray all the time, Lord, send your angels. I go into hotel rooms all the time, I say, Lord, I don't know what I'm in here, but this is a house of God right now. I apply your blood all over this place and I expect to rest in the anointing of God. This is my refuge for the next few days and I'm going to enjoy your presence here in Jesus's name. Amen? Because there's spirits around, but you're carrying the goods. Amen? Say, I got the goods. Amen? God, good. Devil, bad. Hello? It's very simple, amen? Hallelujah! And the anointing reconciles. We're reconciled to God because of the anointing, amen? God is the God of reconciliation, isn't that awesome? That's his identity. And the anointing restores. We're restored because of the anointing. People got healed, people got touched, why? Because God's restoring your flesh to fulfill the will of God for your life. Amen? He said, my yoke is easy, my burden is light. Amen? He doesn't want you weighed down by things. He wants you, doesn't want you preoccupied mentally about financial things or sickness or disease. He wants you focused on him. Amen? And you can look so, you can be so busy looking into the future that you don't have time for the past either. Where God wants you to focus, amen? Look upon him. Look up, your redemption draweth nigh. And the anointing restores. He restores my soul. Psalm 23 is about us in an intimate relationship with God. Psalm 22 pointed to Jesus and him coming prophetically. David was anointed priest, prophet, and king. And he was prophetically speaking about Jesus coming in Psalm 22. And Psalm 23 is about you and I having a relationship with God. Amen? It's not just a, a beautiful poetic psalm to be read at funerals. Everybody says, I said, well, what was your grandma's favorite psalm? What was your, you know, brother, whatevers? You want me to preach it at the funeral? And they'll go, yeah. What is it? Psalm 23. And I preach it. It's not the way they expect it preached, but it's preached, amen? Because if the Lord is your shepherd, you shall not want. Amen? Hallelujah! Amen? We're blessed because of the shepherd, the chief shepherd. The anointing restores, he restores your soul, your mind, your will, your emotion. The anointing keeps us. Amen? 1 Peter 1:5, who are kept by the power of God through faith unto salvation, ready to be revealed in the last time, the fullness of God's salvation will manifest. He says, he says, as he is, so are we in this world. Do you know what that means? We're the body of Christ. He's the head of the body of Christ. When Jesus was on earth, he was the body of Christ. And now he's in heaven and spiritually, we're the body of Christ. We're his hands, we're his feet, we're his vocal cords, we have his anointing. He gave us the same spirit he had, hallelujah! We have resurrection power. If you're dead tonight, you're going to get raised up. God loves dead things. Amen? He called Abraham, amen? And Sarah to have children. They were, they were as good as dead, the Bible says. But God loves dead things. If you're dead tonight, God's going to give you life. Amen? Glory be to God. Because that's what he does. So the anointing will keep you, the anointing will restore you, the anointing will reconcile you first of all. Amen? But the anointing separates us. We get separated. We don't like sin or what it does anymore. We don't like evil activity and what it does anymore. We're separated from it. We've been called to be a holy nation, a royal priesthood. Amen? A holy nation means you're full of the Holy Spirit. Amen? And Jesus operated under this anointing. Because the anointing was on him. Acts 10:38 says, we, we operate under this anointing as well. Amen? And it's all for the, for the, for the works of God to be made manifest. You know, God operates, we cooperate. He operates, we cooperate. Amen? And, and Jesus went to the cross, crushed under the anointing, so we could have the anointing. How God anointed Jesus Christ of Nazareth with the Holy Ghost who went about doing good. Amen? Healing all who were oppressed of the devil. The anointing will, will destroy yokes, remove burdens, heal the oppressed of the devil. That's what the anointing does. And Jesus, and I was thinking about this, and Jesus, his anointing was imparted to him from the Father, wasn't it? Remember that? Remember when he came and he was baptized and the anointing came? Because association brings impartation. David's anointing came from the Father. He was a man after God's own heart and his anointing, he associated with the Father. He was a man after God's own heart, he associated with him. He was supposed to associate with Saul, his spiritual father, but his, his father, his mentor became his tormentor. So everything he did, he learned, that was wrong, he learned from him and he got closer to God. He sought the Lord and he was anointed even more. And he didn't have to seek the anointing. The anointing found him. Amen? I'm gonna touch on that in a moment. Amen? Because association brings impartation. And the Apostle Paul spent time with Jesus. Spend time with Jesus. Be careful who you hang out with. I hang around with people that believe the way I believe, the word of God. And when I go to different churches, there's people there that believe the way I believe. I hang out with them. I hear they're speaking the same language as me. Jesus! Amen? He's the one that set me free. He's the one that keeps me free. And he's the one that's taking me out of here in freedom. Amen? Not Freedom 55. So think of that. Can we just pull up that scripture? Acts 10:38. I wanna show you something here. Think about this for a moment. And don't think I'm a heretic. Okay? Everybody say PB's not a heretic. Amen? Acts 10:38, if we can pull that up. Today'd be good. Acts 10:38. Praise God. Anyway. "How God anointed Jesus Christ of Nazareth with the Holy Ghost, who went about doing good, healing all that were oppressed of the devil." Amen? For God was with him. How God anointed you through Jesus Christ with the Holy Ghost, who's supposed to go about doing good, healing all who were oppressed of the devil. "For this purpose was the Son of God made manifest, that he might destroy the works of the devil." "For this purpose was the Son of God made manifest in you, that you might destroy the works of the devil." Through Jesus. Hello, somebody? "Because greater is he who is in me than he is in the world." "For this purpose was the Son of God made manifest, that he might destroy the works..." He destroyed all the works of the devil. Now he wants us going outcast and outdevils. I'd say that's destroying the works of the devil. He wants to cause havoc in the devil's kingdom. Amen? Glory be to God. Amen? Let's go to Luke 10:18-21. I'm just trying to cover some scriptures, cause you need, write them down and go over them too. Don't just listen to what a preacher says. Study the word yourself. Amen? "The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, because he hath anointed me to preach the gospel to the poor." See, you're anointed to talk about the gospel, the freedom of the Lord. Amen? "He hath sent me to heal the brokenhearted." The anointing heals brokenhearted people. If you got a broken heart, God'll heal you tonight. If you're poor spiritually, God will make you rich. Amen? "To set the captives free." If you're bound by anything, God will set you free tonight. "And the recovery of the sight to blind." If you're spiritually blind, God will heal you. Amen? You'll be able to see with spiritual eyes. Amen? And also, he'll do physical healing as well. "To set at liberty them that are bruised." That means those that are hurting inside. God will set them free. "To preach the acceptable year of the Lord, which is the year of Jubilee, debt cancellation." Amen? Your sins, he'll cancel them. "And he closed the book and gave it to the minister and sat down, and the eyes of all of them were in the synagogue, were fastened on him, and he began to say unto them, 'This day the Scripture has been fulfilled.'" In Acts 10:27, "And it shall come to pass," speaking of Jesus as well, "and his burden shall be taken away from off thy shoulder and his yoke from off thy neck; and the yoke shall be destroyed because of the anointing." Whatever's done by God, for the will of God will be accomplished by the Holy Spirit as well. Because it's not by might nor by power, it's by my Spirit. The anointing, I said, it removes burdens, it destroys yokes, because it's a burden-removing, yoke-destroying, anointing that God has given. Amen? I'm gonna briefly touch on something here. Because there's a progression of anointing in our lives as well. And David was anointed three times. I'm gonna be fast here, and I wanna pray for people. In 1 Samuel 16:13, "Then Samuel took the horn of oil and anointed him in the midst of his brethren, and the Spirit of the Lord came upon him, came upon David from that day forward." David was anointed king that day. He was anointed king, but he wasn't on the throne yet. Because that was a personal anointing. That was a personal anointing of preparation for him to be king. And it wasn't until 17:15, he was 15 to 17, they say. He took another, a lot of years before he got to the throne. Amen? Another amount of time that progressed, but he was anointed again. So the first anointing he received was when he was rejected by his family members. He was overlooked, but not overlooked by God. Amen? He had the shepherd, he was the shepherd. He was considered the lowlife of the family. But he ended up taking, becoming the highest in the family. Amen? He received the anointing of the king in preparation to be king. It was a private anointing for a personal work. Amen? By God, he starts to do a work in you. There's a personal anointing. "He shall lead you and guide you into all truth." That's a personal anointing. Then there's corporate anointings. We're public worship. There's a stronger anointing. And then there's anointings that come upon you for service as well. And so that was his first anointed. David was still a shepherd boy, but the anointing of God was preparing him for king. The anointing is always preparing you for something else. The anointing is preparing us for eternity. Hello, somebody? Amen? I don't know about you, but I'm not focused on this world. This world's temporal. Everything in this world's fleeting. Amen? "Heaven and earth shall pass away, but my words shall not pass away." This heaven, this atmosphere that we live in, it's passing away. This earth that we live in is passing away. We're going to a place, there's a new Jerusalem. There's a new heaven, a new earth. Amen? That's where we're going, because we're new creations in Christ. That's where we're going. So don't focus on all you have here. Amen? This is temporal. There's more for us eternally blessed. We have an eternal heavenly Father. Amen? The second anointing, 2 Samuel 2:4, "And the men of Judah came, and they anointed David as king over the house of Judah." See, the second anointing he received, it would be like an anointing of refinement. Amen? Faithfulness under fire, conflict and testing. Have you ever been there? You're gonna keep serving God when everything's not going the way you want to? And your peers wanna kill you? Hello, somebody? When you're in the ministry, you get things coming at you all the time. But you know, the more you move along, the stronger you get. And the more anointing, the anointing increases in your life. I love it when ministers come to my church and they tell me how everything's going wrong. I'm like, "Oh, boy, it's gonna be good meetings." Amen? Cause they're a smoldering sacrifice. They're a living sacrifice for the Lord. And so, the promise was real, but the process wasn't over for David when he was anointed king over Judah. And you know, when you come to a new level, you're gonna face a new devil. I'm sorry, but that's the truth. And he would be king there for seven and a half years, which is God's perfect number, where your motives become God's motives through maturity. Have you ever seen ministers? They're very immature. They're gifted, but they're very immature. Because your gift will not, will not develop your character. Hello? Your gift will not develop your character. Any of your gifts will not develop your character. Every good gift is from above and comes from the Father of lights, with whom there's no variation or shadow of turning. My gift will never develop my character. Me spending time looking into the face of my Father will develop my character. The word of God having its way in me will change my character. Amen? And I'll be Christ-like. Amen? I see some people, they, they, they think they're, you know, they're celebrities. Hello, somebody? It's true. And they treat them like celebrities. You know? I've been in places preaching at different places and they're signing autographs. I'm like, "Would Jesus want, you know, would you say to Jesus, 'Here, give me your autograph, J.C.?' No, really? Did he anoint you to get your autograph and to get you all puffed up in pride and..." Hello, somebody? No. Freely receive, freely give. Amen? I got other issues about, "God gives me an anointing to bring a revelation and I'm selling it?" I don't, you know, I don't know about that myself. I don't feel good about that. Cause the Bible says, "Freely receive, freely give." Whatever he gives me, I give away. Amen? For free. Hallelujah. It's not mine to begin with. If God gives me a song, it's not mine. He gave it to me. If God gives me a message, it's not mine, it's his. He's got the copyright, not me. Amen? If God gives me anointing, I'm not gonna sell the anointing. Amen? People try to sell you anointed cloths. Everything was free at the cross. It was paid and sold. Jesus paid for it all. It's all free. Amen? And the more you give away. I see ministries that give things away. They prosper more than other ministries that don't. Hello, somebody? And don't be Christians, you know, when you become a Christian too, it feels like you need a crowbar to get in your wallet. Hello, somebody? Before you got saved, you threw money around like a drunken sailor. Don't shout me down, that's good preaching. Because I was there too. I gave it, God, everything but my wallet. Amen? But I learned about it. God said, "I don't want your money, I want your obedience." Because if you're not obedient, I can't bless you. Amen? That's what he did with me. That's, I'm not gonna go too long on that one though. Anyway, moving along. The third anointing. Amen? In 2 Samuel 5:3, we're winding down. "So all the elders of Israel came to the king of Hebron, and King David made a league with them in Hebron before the Lord, and they anointed David king over Israel." Now, what was promised privately, you know, when he was 15 to 17 years old, was made manifest when David was 30 years old. There's a bit of time there, isn't there? You know why? Because there's quality control with God. Amen? God don't make dollar store junk. Hello, somebody? Amen? And so, that's how long you had to wait for him to become into that position. But he was anointed, he was on a journey. You're on a journey. You're anointed. You're gonna be going from line upon line, precept upon precept, here a little, there a little, glory to glory, tangible presence to tangible presence of God. And you're gonna fulfill the will of God because of the anointing. And always remember, you know, without him, I have nothing. With him, I have everything. God doesn't call the qualified, he qualifies the called. Amen? First of all. Oh, thank you, brother. Anyway. Now just remember, this oil isn't gonna do anything for you. Amen? The Holy Spirit is. This, this oil is a contact point. And I'm just gonna be obedient to the Lord, and I'm gonna anoint you. Amen? And I'll tell you something, I'm just gonna share with you. God mentioned this to me. I received three anointings from different ministers. Three, and you know what? I didn't want anything. I just went to work and helped them. That's all I did. Amen? The first man of God that God put me with, he had a prophet's anointing on his life. He was out there. Amen? But he had the prophet's anointing on his life. And people would come in and he could read their mail and just, you know, and minister to them. And the Lord told me to submit to him. And I had a hard time, because our personalities weren't jiving that well anyway. But anyway, the Lord put me with him for a period of time, and I submitted to him, and I helped him the best I could. And I was the first one there and the last one to leave. And, and then all of a sudden, I was riding my bicycle and the Lord said, "He's gonna ask you to minister this week." And I was driving down the street. I heard that voice. I go in, he says, "I want you to prepare a message." Just like that. And then, after a while, I kept hanging, staying there, submitted to where God told me to. Next thing you know, I would go up and I would catch for him, and I would know what he's gonna pray about before he prayed. And then I would come in and I would have the message already that he's preaching. And you see, because of faith, I caught the anointing off of him. And the Lord uses me in that area quite a bit. It's not something you turn on and on. When it turns on, you run with it. Amen? And I just say, people say, "How do you know that about me? I don't know nothing about you. God knows everything about you." But he anointed me in that area, and that's, and then, and then he put me with a teacher for a while. And I spent a lot of time intimately with that teacher. I didn't understand what was going on. And he was teaching me through the word of God, and he had a teacher's anointing on his life. And then all of a sudden, there was an impartation of a teacher's anointing. And a teacher will break down the word and make it digestible for you. Amen? I like to teach the way I wanna be taught. That's what God taught me, anyway. And so there was another mantle. Then he put me with another minister who had the Father's heart, the shepherd's heart. And then God gave an impartation there as well. See, because I wasn't resisting. I was just submitting, trying to help them succeed in what God called them to do. And all of a sudden, I was catching things. Catch the fire. Amen? There was impartation through association. And that's what happens. And I've met Christians that are still bouncing around for 35 years. Gypsies for Jesus. Tumbleweed Christians. They're just, they're not connected anywhere, and they got the same problems they had when I met them. Because they're not submitted to the order of God. God, I didn't like submission at first, but there's, he told me, "There's protection in submission. Submit." Amen? Cause I did it my way, baby. And no, no, nobody's telling me what to do. Amen? Even on the job. "I'm leaving, I'll go get another job tomorrow. I don't like you." Amen? And then I brought that in when I got saved. And God started, you know, my mind was contorting when the word of God. And when they would say, "Can you do this or do that?" And I'm like, "You tell me what to do." Amen? We see there are some things that needed to be worked out, but the word of God drove that rebellion away. The rod of correction, the word of God will drive that rebellion away. Hello, somebody? If you're teachable. If you're teachable, you're reachable. And if you're teachable, you'll receive. And then Jesus, think about this. After Jesus anointed them all. Amen? When they went out, it said, remember, Jesus got frustrated with them. He said, "How long must I be with you?" I say that to our church sometimes. Just joking around. But, but then it says, "Then, when he was gone, it said, 'All things were brought to their remembrance.'" God'll bring what you need. It'll be like a tap. It'll turn on and just start flowing out of you. Amen? Amen? You'll know what to say. "You've done it, lots of you have." "Well, I just started talking to them and all of a sudden, I just, I just, everything just come into my mind and I just spoke what needed to be said, it was awesome." That's the anointing! Amen? And I was thinking about this person all day and, and I ran into them! Well, you're moving in a word of knowledge and you didn't even know it. See, a lot of times, we're moving in the gifts of the Spirit and we don't even know it. Give that guy some money. That's the Holy Spirit, that's the word of knowledge, God telling you to give him money. Not me, I'm not... We already took up the offering, so you can relax. Amen? Anyway, praise God. So, remember, that's very important, that's the order of God. Amen? And I shared about being resistant to the anointing of God. You'll, you'll be saved, sanctified, and stuck. You'll be miserable all your life if you don't yield to the anointing of God. It's Jesus submitted to the will of the Father. And he wrestled with the will of the Father, but he still submitted to it. And the anointing came as he wrestled through it. He said, "Nevertheless, not my will, but thy will be done." And the Apostle Paul prayed three times, "Lord, take this thorn from my side." And he prayed three times and the Lord said, "My grace is sufficient. You get back in there and my grace, my empowering presence will see you through." That's what he was saying. Praise God! Amen? I'm closing out. But I wanna pray... I wanna pray for leaders first. I wanna anoint you. And I prayed about this all day. I've been praying about this and I'm just going to do what God told me to do. I'm gonna pray an impartation in your life. Some of you may feel something immediately. Some of you may feel something over time. Some of you might have a paradigm shift. Amen? But I'm gonna be obedient to the Holy Spirit. I don't dream this stuff up, God tells me what to do. I spend time praying all day. And, you know, people think it's cool, traveling, it's not really cool. You're locked up in a room all day. I don't go out hanging out all day, I run out for an hour or two and that's it. And then I'm shut in, seeking the Lord on your behalf. 'Cause I'm here to serve the Lord, not myself. Amen? And I wanna get the mind of God and give you a piece of His mind. That's the call of God, is to get the mind of God and give you a piece of His mind. And so, and if you're open to receive what He's done, you're gonna receive something. I want everybody in this church that's in leadership to come up first. I'm just doing it the way God told me to do it. Amen? If you're called into leadership, I want you to come up first. [speaking in a foreign language] The Bible says repent, you know? And the, the spirit, the times of refreshing shall come. Repent and be converted, that the times of refreshing may come from the presence of the Lord. So we live a life of repentance. We're converted by the Word of God. Amen? And the freshness comes from the anointing of the Holy Ghost. That's why he said in Acts 2:38, "Repent, repent and be converted, that the times of refreshing may come from the presence of the Lord." First, first thing we do is we repent. And the Word of God converts us and changes us. And then there's times of refreshing that come from the presence of the Lord, to get you where you need to go. Amen? And that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna release the anointing. That was what God put on my heart. So when I pray for you, I'm just gonna anoint you and be ready to receive what God has for you. Some people said, "Wow, I didn't know what was happening," but something was happening and that's the Holy Ghost happening! Amen? He knows what you need. Amen? And He'll take you over, not under. Amen? Glory. Because He equips us. Amen? He equips us. So let's just get in an attitude of worship right now. [speaking in a foreign language] "Lord, I come in obedience to you, my Father in heaven, whose I am, who I'm served. And Lord, you know, I don't do this all the time, but you instructed me to do it. All week, you've been telling me to do this, Father. So I'm gonna be obedient to you, Lord, and I expect signs, wonders, and miracles. I expect your power to manifest in the lives of your children. I expect the freshness of your presence to take them over. I expect a new anointing. I expect paradigm shifts. I expect the power of God to be released. When I anoint them by faith with the contact point of the holy oil, Lord, that is consecrated for you, there will be a manifestation which represents the Holy Spirit. We are welcoming the Holy Spirit to fulfill the will of God. 'Not my will, but thy will be done, Father. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven.'" Hallelujah! For the glory of God, we do this for the glory, the glory of our Father, the glory of the Lord. [speaking in a foreign language] It's not by might nor by power, Lord, we can't do it by our soul power, we can't do it by our might, but it's by your Spirit. We need your Spirit, we need the anointing, we need it now more than ever, Father. And we thank you for the freshness of your presence, in Jesus' name. [speaking in a foreign language] In Jesus' name! Be charged! In Jesus' name, be charged! In Jesus' name, be charged! Whoa! [speaking in a foreign language] Be charged, in Jesus' name! Be charged! Be fresh! Be charged! [speaking in a foreign language] All things are passing away. Things that have hindered you are deteriorating, in Jesus' name. You've been majoring on minors, they're gone, in Jesus' name! Be charged, in Jesus' name! [speaking in a foreign language] More, Lord! [speaking in a foreign language] There's a confidence coming to you, in Jesus' name. Be blessed, in Jesus' name, be anointed! Freshness of God's presence. [speaking in a foreign language] There's a hunger in your heart for the deeper things of God and God has put that there. [speaking in a foreign language] And you'll never be satisfied unless you're being fed the way you need to be fed. [speaking in a foreign language] More, Lord! Thank you, Father, for fulfilling your will in her life, Lord. Thank you for the anointing, destroying every yoke, removing every burden over her life, in Jesus' name. Thank you right now that all confusion is lifted off of her. Lord, I thank you for the freshness of your presence blowing upon my sister's life right now. Blow on your garden, Father, give it all the nutrients to grow, to grow into what you've called her to be and do for your glory, in Jesus' name. [speaking in a foreign language] God says, "You're, you're anointed and you're appointed and you're in the right place, doing the right thing." [speaking in a foreign language] And God says, "Don't be shy, step out when I move you, when I stir you. Move out, step out. My boldness will meet you there," saith the Lord, in Jesus' name. [speaking in a foreign language] In Jesus' name, be charged! And I command your body to be whole, I command your body to function properly. I command vertigo to go, in Jesus' name. I command sickness and disease to go, in Jesus' name. Be healed, be whole, be anointed afresh, to fulfill the will of God for your life. The best place for you to be is where God's called you to be, doing what God has called you to do, because that's where the infest. And I thank you for the freshness of your presence in her life, in Jesus' name. You're not going under. You're not going under, in Jesus' name! You're strong. Your spirit is strong. Your spirit's sustaining you. And you're healed, in Jesus' name! Yes, thank you, Jesus! Thank you, Jesus! It's unacceptable, in Jesus' name. [speaking in a foreign language] Oh yeah, brother. There's been a time where you wavered, but no more. No more, you're standing, you're a pillar in this assembly. [speaking in a foreign language] You're all in, in Jesus' name. You're anointed to win, 'cause you're all in, in Jesus' name. [speaking in a foreign language] From the top of his head to the soles of his feet, in Jesus' name. Flood him with the freshness of your presence. And Lord, I thank you for his healing, in Jesus' name. I thank you that his heart beats with the rhythm of life, in Jesus' name. I thank you, Lord, that he is in line for a medical miracle for the glory of God, in Jesus' name! Hallelujah! We come to you, Father. Jesus took his sickness and he's redeemed by the blood of the Lamb, he's bought back. He's bought back to be brought back, in Jesus' name. Amen? [speaking in a foreign language] Amen, lift your hands, brother. The freshness of God's [speaking in a foreign language] The Scripture keeps coming to me, "If the same Spirit that raised Christ Jesus from the dead dwell in you, he shall quicken your mortal body." I command this body, this mortal body, to be quickened by the power of the Holy Ghost, in Jesus' name! Be whole, from the top of your head to the soles of your feet, in Jesus' name. And God says, "You're gonna be fresh. You're gonna be fresh, 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 in Jesus' name." Woo! Thank you, Jesus! Amen? I'm blessed! I'm fresh in the Lord, praise God! Hallelujah! [speaking in a foreign language] Praise God, come on, sister. Glory be to God! [speaking in a foreign language] Lord, I thank you for the work you've done in Christine's life and what you're doing in her life, Lord. And Lord, I just thank you, Lord, that the anointing is in her, it's on her, it's to her, it's through her. And Father, I thank you that she will be astounded at the things you're gonna do through her ministry, Lord, as she continues to yield to you, Father. [speaking in a foreign language] And I thank you, Lord, right now, because I feel there's healing in your hands, amen? I feel the Lord has anointed... Don't be afraid to lay hands on people and release the power of God. You're not the healer Jesus is, but by faith, when you step out and lay hands, you're gonna see healing, you're gonna see health. [speaking in a foreign language] And God says, "Invest in those that want to be invested in." And He'll give you a sensitivity to that, in Jesus' name. [speaking in a foreign language] Let the freshness of your presence be in her, on her, to her and through her, Father, for your glory, in Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. And you know what? I want you all to lift your hands to the Lord. 'Cause God's telling me to do this and I'm gonna do it, in Jesus' name. Lift your hands and get ready to receive a blessing. Be blessed! Be blessed! Be blessed! In Jesus' name! Amen? [speaking in a foreign language] Praise God! You feel that? Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. He's doing a new thing, praise God. He's doing a new thing. [speaking in a foreign language] Be blessed! Be blessed! He's doing a new thing. You're in phase two. You need to get excited and you're ignited, now you need to be excited and just press in. And God's gonna speak to you. Creative ability. [speaking in a foreign language] Freshness of His presence is gonna come in and go out through you. [speaking in a foreign language] And I really feel that the hardships that you faced and the hard pressing on the sides that people don't know about, they're diminishing. And you're gonna rise above now. And those places of battle are gonna be, you're gonna have a stance of victory and you're gonna work from the place of victory, in Jesus' name. You'll not be moved by anyone's emotions or opinions, because you're anointed of God. Be blessed! In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. Amen? Praise God! Praise God! This young man wants to give his heart to Jesus, eh? Come on up here, brother. Praise God. It's okay, man. You know, we all need God, don't we? Amen? I want you to pray with me. Father? Just pray what I pray. Father? Thank you for sending your Son, Jesus, to die in my place. You became my sin. Became my sickness. Cleanse me with your blood. Free me from sin. Be my Savior. In Jesus' name. I receive you. I receive the forgiveness of sin through the shed blood at Calvary's cross. In Jesus' name. Fill him, Lord, flood him with your presence, in Jesus' name. Take his life! [speaking in a foreign language] In the name of Jesus, I speak creative ability into your life, in Jesus' name. Woo! God is good, amen? You feel the presence of the Lord there? Amen, that's okay, you just sit there and enjoy it too. Just enjoy the presence of God. God's blessing you, God's touching you. Amen? Glory be to God, God is good. Amen? God is good, don't rush things, just enjoy God's presence. Bless him, Lord. Just manifest your glory in his life right now. We rush things, Lord, and we need to rest in the Lord. We need to be still and know you are God. Anyone else needs prayer? I wanna pray for you before I close. And if you're here tonight and you don't know Jesus, just accept Jesus. You need Jesus. And if you're away from Jesus, just come back to Him. He said, "The gifts and calling of God are without repentance." [speaking in a foreign language] I just wanna pray for you, Mark, come on up here, I love you, brother. I just wanna pray for you. And, and you know something, man? As we were in worship and praying, God's gonna restore a lot of things for you. You know that? I believe within a year, God's gonna have things back in order for you. I believe you're gonna be thriving, I believe you're gonna be thriving, in Jesus' name. Make a way where there seems to be no way, God. Do it for your glory, Father. I love this brother, I thank you for him, Father, and I pray for him, in Jesus' name. His life will be a trophy of your glory, in Jesus' name. Thank you for restoring everything that the canker worm has tried to eat away from his life, in Jesus' name. He's called, he's anointed, he's appointed, and now he's in a progression of preparation, in Jesus' name, for the glory of God. Hallelujah! [speaking in a foreign language] In Jesus' name. God bless you, brother, I love you, man. Praise God. Remember when, meeting him years ago, when he come down to Peterborough? Praise God. Good people. Amen? Praise God, brother, you want some of that, eh? Give me some of that. Is that what you're saying? Praise God, amen? It's the anointing of God. Lift your hands to the Lord, it's the Holy Spirit. He's your helper. The Holy Spirit's my helper. He's your helper. Help him! Help him, Lord! Help him, Lord, in his life, help him in his decisions, help him in his trials, help him in his victories. Help him in his spirit, help him in his soul, help him in his body, right now. In Jesus' name, we welcome you. Flood his existence and bring glory to your name, Jesus. Ah, I feel the presence of the Lord, man. [speaking in a foreign language] You know, man, I see you happy. I see you smiling, dancing. Jesus. More, Lord, more. Praise God. Hallelujah! Praise God. Lord, I thank you for the anointing, the freshness of your presence in my brother's life right now. More, Lord. [speaking in a foreign language] It's His, Lord, flooding and flowing, Lord, igniting, exciting, Father. [speaking in a foreign language] Freshness. Yes. [speaking in a foreign language] More, Lord, thank you. I gotta glow about you tonight, sister. [speaking in a foreign language] You gotta glow about you tonight, because the Holy Ghost is overwhelming you, in Jesus' name. Every name been met, in Jesus' name. Every name been met, in Jesus' name. The anointing, you were crushed, Jesus, on the exterior and the interior, so she could be healed. We receive that anointing tonight, that brings reconciliation and restoration, in Jesus' Medical miracles, Father, in Jesus' name. Medical miracles, in Jesus' name. Things have seemed hard. The devil's trying to make them hard. Tonight, there's a freshness of my presence in you, on you, to you, and it's gonna move through you. And the weighty things that have been trying to pull you down and all the what ifs. Should I have done this, should I have done that? Go, in Jesus' name! You're gonna be settled in the Spirit, you're gonna be settled in your innermost being, in the plan and the purpose of God, in the anointing of God, in Jesus' name. [speaking in a foreign language] Every hurt, every pain, every seed, go! In Jesus' name. Every spirit, go! In Jesus' name. Your assignments are over, you're arrested through the authority of the mighty name of Jesus Christ and you are canceled over her life now, in Jesus' name. In Jesus' name, be free and blessed. Be happy again, in Jesus' name. [speaking in a foreign language] Be happy, in Jesus' name. Woo! [speaking in a foreign language] Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Glory, glory, glory. Joy for the journey. Well, praise God. Thank you all for everything. Thank you, Jesus.
Just a beautiful heavy anointing in the house tonight. Thank you, Lord. Be encouraged, in Jesus' name. Be encouraged, in Jesus' name. And times of refreshing come from the presence of the Lord. And I pray that this anointing and the wind of the Holy Ghost shift you from every old season to the new, in Jesus' mighty name. That everything that's been a hang up on your life be lifted and left behind, in Jesus' name. Old mindsets be left at this altar. Burdens, yokes, in Jesus' name. Thank you, Father. Amen? Thank you, Lord, no one do this except it's in my heart to do. So I'm just gonna ask you to stretch your hands towards Pastor Brian who's poured out. He's came and he's poured out. Out of his spirit. And he sought the Lord and he's been a blessing to us, and we just bless the man of God. Father, I just pray, increase every need met with overflow. And I thank you, Lord, that you're gonna bring in some people around him that will be givers and bringers of joy. They're gonna lift a lot of heaviness that has tried to come from other sources and other places. You're gonna bring in people that like to laugh. And will bring joy into the atmosphere. But Father, we thank you for a great refreshing in life and health over him and Sherry and all his children and all his family, Lord, we just bless them tonight, in the name of the Lord Jesus. Thank you, Lord, that you just pour out your spirit, that there is healing, there is refreshing in everything that is needed in every way, in Jesus' name, amen? Well, we've been really blessed, truly blessed. Again, I'm gonna say, if you have a testimony, would you just please stick around, come right up to the frontier? My wife is right here, she's just gonna take a quick testimony from you, we're gonna get it on video. So if you've received a healing, this is your chance to give the Lord the glory for it and share your testimony with some others, okay? So that others can be encouraged and be touched by the healing or whatever it was that you received from the Lord. So we're gonna ask you to come up right now, just come up to the frontier and we're gonna get your testimony. God bless you tonight, we're back on Sunday, Sunday service at one o'clock, in Jesus' name.